We'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, can you take the roll?
Lori Krasinski.
Here.
Tom Hanks.
Here.
Dr. Fishel.
Here.
Jennifer Hardin.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and a super republic for which it stands, one nation of honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. There's a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 25th, 2022, and September 7th, 2022. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Placko, can you call the roll?
Jennifer Grassey.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardin.
Aye.
Lori Krasinski.
Aye.
Tom Hanks.
Aye.
Dr. Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. Special reports?
Yes, we have a special report today. I asked, and this is an actuary coming, to talk briefly about some of our options for commencement, whether or not we should go back to Menor or somewhere else, or whether or not we should continue to have the ceremony here. What I'd like to do is just tell the board what my preference would be is to continue to have it here, but there is quite a price difference, a cost difference, between having it here and having it at Menor. So before we go forward and, you know, schedule and commit to some companies, I just wanted to have that quick conversation with the board.
Because it's been documented before, our graduation ceremony, we're only looking at the space for the ceremony, we're not looking at chair rental, any programs, any associated fees with security and such. Having it on the field last year cost us about $19,000 before we added on those additional fees. Most of that is in union setup cost because we are hiring production companies to do it, and if you've seen our graduation, it is a high level production quality. We can pare that down some, we can remove a screen, we can reangle on the field, but regardless, the majority of the money, if we go with a production company, is going to be in union wages to set up. Looking back to what we spent at Menor, I contacted Menor today, and we're about $2,500 in rental there. We still have to do chairs, we still have to do security, we still have to do programs, but you can see roughly $20,000 versus $2,500. There are additional companies in Cleveland we can contact, we've already contacted one of them, but we're not going to be varying a hot lot on that, only because we are looking at, yet again, union scale for the wages.
You know, there are pluses and minuses, obviously, when we have it outside, right mercy of what the weather might be, but it is on our own location, which is nice. Having it at Menor, obviously, it's a lot smaller, it limits the number of tickets that we're looking to allocate to our students. Don't have to worry much about the weather, though, if you walk in there, it's air conditioned, no matter what, you know, it's not hot, it's not raining in there. So there's pros and cons. The reason why, it's one of the things that, you know, we should be making that decision and, you know, I noticed over the last couple of years, that a lot of the board members did like having it back here, and it seems like parents did, too, so long as the weather cooperates. But because of the costs, there's such a difference in the cost being at Menor and being here, I just wanted to identify the board before we committed anything. Again, once we have it here, there's no limit on the number of tickets we can provide to students. You know, we're getting to a point where at Menor, it's a little bit more difficult. We've given out over the years up to four tickets for students. Students that wanted more tickets would have to go through a process in order to get those tickets. What your thoughts are, if you want to...
I mean, for me, I don't, I don't want to move it from Riverside. I loved having it here, I mean, I've heard nothing but good from our families and the community having it. I love seeing the kids be able to take pictures at their own school that they graduated from, and especially the fact of not having to limit the tickets. I mean, last year I had, I think I used eight or 10 for my oldest when he graduated, I mean, it was so nice to really have all the people there that wanted to be there to celebrate their kids. I, if we were in the financial position we were years ago, it'd be a good conversation, but I think that it's well worth the extra money to give our students that opportunity to graduate at home.
I'm in the same position, I like it here, and I like the fact that we can give the parents enough tickets to have a family and enjoy it also.
And I, why shouldn't the last moments of our graduates' association with Riverside be on Riverside property?
I agree with that.
And we'll be private. The second. All right. Right in the second?
Yeah, we will schedule meetings for the rest of the weekend.
You heard it here first?
Thank you for everything you do at Chinga. You make it absolutely amazing. It's awesome. Thank you.
Any other special reports?
Yes.
That brings us to old business. There was none communicated, I don't know if anything came up, any old business?
I had something, I had a couple things come to me, so I'll just address it. At the last board meeting on August 25th, one of the speakers during the public comment portion of the meeting asked the board to show me the proof or the receipts that harmful material is being taught in Riverside schools because he said he has not seen any evidence that this is occurring. In response to this request for evidence, I will give three examples of what I believe are harmful material being taught in our schools. The first example occurred last September when an elementary school teacher decided on her own to read a book to her class on transgenderism. That decision sparked parents to show up at the next board meeting denouncing that action. Superintendent Kalis addressed that situation by saying that will never happen again. Another example occurred last week when a very concerned parent gave me material that she said was being used in the classroom. A sentence from the material says, "Don't worry about that power-happy pendejo." The reference person in this statement is a police officer. Pendejo is Spanish, and it is a vulgarism to describe a specific part of a person's rear end. I suggest we should not be using the word pendejo in our classrooms, especially when talking about police personnel or any other authority figure. This story also portrayed police as power-hungry, abusive, mean, uncaring, and racist. This story portrayed police as the enemy, and there should be no place for that kind of teaching in the Riverside schools. This teaching separates people and separates the community from the police, causing distrust and fear. Another example or receipt is a recent classroom worksheet with the heading of hate. The heading word is miso, which is the root word for the worksheet. Miso means to hate. One of the worksheet words is misogyny, and it was to be coupled with hatred of women. Another portion of the worksheet was to use misogyny in a pre-made sentence that started, "His hostile behavior towards only female staff members revealed his misogyny." Other parts of the worksheet couples the word misogynist with the words bachelor and his, and couples the word misanthrope with the word him, and couples the word misogynist with the word his. The worksheet clearly ties men to the word hate. We should not be teaching hatred, and that men have a hatred for women, and that men mistreat women. This teaching separates men and women and teaches a disrespect for both men and women. We in the Riverside local school district should not be pushing hatred, we should be teaching academics and with the academics how to work together and not against each other.
Has that information been presented to the administration so they can look into it?
I believe that's in process.
Have you guys had a conversation with the parents that had that issue?
President Krasinski, I believe the administration is fully aware of it, from what I understand, at one particular incident.
So any other old business? Great, new business? One of the things we had on the list for new business was about the handbook, but I think we'll address that later in the agenda during the consent agenda.
Yep.
All right. The other thing is OSBA platform material, and I know you have something on that, Mr. Hatt.
I do indeed. So I had a conversation with Mr. Placko about how to handle the review of the changes to, the proposed changes to the OSBA Iowa School Board Association legislative platform, of which there are at least 14, I counted 14 different items that are being proposed, some line through, so removals, some additions. And we do, the formal material for the November Capitol Conference will come out in October. And so what I'm proposing is this, I developed a tracker sheet, which I know can't be seen, but there are all 14 of the items that are part of the changes, proposed changes, are included here, and I have emailed this to everyone, so you have it in your Riverside email. I've also included a copy of the platform with the changes in it, and my thought is that we can go through on our own, look at the, and I have to include the line items or the line numbers, so hopefully it's pretty self-explanatory, that we can then go ahead and review it in October, which would be plenty of time for the meeting in November. So that is my approach to getting this done, we never have done this before, so, you know, hopefully this will work, and if we can think of a better plan for next year, I'm all for it, but I think this should be effective for this go around.
Are you anticipating that we're going to talk about each one of those 14 items at the board meeting itself?
Yeah, so...
As part of open session, or are you anticipating that we're going to be doing that ahead of time?
So that's, I think, I haven't fully thought through that, but that's why I included your, so on the spreadsheet, you have the ability to put down whether you're in favor of it or not, and maybe we can treat it like a, an item on a consent agenda, and those who want to not vote in favor of something can pull aside, and we can always discuss those specific ass or, you know, those specific items that perhaps there's not a unanimous vote. But I'm certainly open to suggestions on how to make that operate more efficiently.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, because, I mean, the materials that we, that were presented previously by OSBA have all the information, line items in, crossed out, and bolded, and for additions and whatever, I'm just curious how you...
Right, but with the policy we passed, we do need to vote on it, so that's my thoughts on how to approach it.
So you're looking to see where do we all agree, where do we don't, where do we need a discussion?
Right, so again, just hopefully be more clear, we would, we would approach this as a, as a consent agenda item, and then at that time, if people wanted to say, pull item number five out, can vote on it separately, we can, so we can hopefully quickly identify those where we have consensus on, and then have perhaps discussion and/or at least a vote where people can have the option of voting in your name or something.
Mrs. Grassey, you sat in on the session before, so how do they, do they go by each line to vote on it?
They do, each one, each one of them is an individual platform item, and we vote, you vote on every single one of them. Okay.
You bet.
So would that mean that since each one is voted on individually at the meeting, what we agreed on as a board would be to approve or not approve each one?
Yes.
That's why I asked to make sure, what do they, they vote on as a whole, because that makes sense.
Right, right, because when I, when I read it, there were some that seemed to be pretty closely duplicated, so, yeah, voting on it as a whole didn't make all that sense, so that clears it up. And then we would just decide which ones we agree on and which ones we don't, and some, I guess then, if there's a disagreement, would be an individual vote on each one, or what would it mean to be unanimous?
Yeah, so again, say we have agreements on all but item number five, we would, we would vote as a consent agenda item for one through four and six through 14, we would, you know, pass that, and then we'd have a separate vote on item number five.
So because we have an attorney here, can we provide a summary, like our tally, like what our thoughts are on these, to perhaps Jim, and they could put this into the agenda prior to the meeting, and then we can discuss them, or do we have to, like, actually, like, bring this to the meeting with our ranking? Do you know what I mean? Like, we could, we could do it one of two ways, they could already have that done for us, if we all have some kind of, like, thought amongst ourselves, or just, you know, individually, hey, I like this one, I don't like this one, I like this one, this one, this one, this one, and tie with all these except for this. Do you know what I mean, and we, I don't know, are we allowed to provide that to Jim?
Yes, so you can provide all that information to Jim, Jim can compile it, he can share it with each of the board members, you know, in advance of the meeting, and then you can have your final discussion at the meeting.
So be ready to go.
So how, so, sometimes my, my brain doesn't fully click, so in essence, if I'm hearing, if I'm inferring correctly, we would provide all of our comments...
Yeah, we can just, like, take this to Jim, right?
And then we would compile it, and that way we'd understand upfront which ones we automatically, which ones need we vote on separately, in essence. Okay, that makes sense to me. So I think we, so the meeting, I believe, is on the October...
27?
Yep, October 27th.
It might be a good idea just to kind of, each board member say which item they want separate from those, instead of giving your feedback on those items, that kind of turns into a discussion outside of the board meetings, might be better to say, hey, you know, Tom Hanks, I want these two items separate, and Tom Hanks, I want these two items separate, and that way we just, then we have that discussion at the table in the whole meeting.
Yeah.
And not running out of tabulation through an email or anything like that, in a way, it's just, these items you want to vote on separately, not really giving an opinion either way, whether you're, or against something, there's something you want to discuss separately and handle.
In the strictest sense of the sunshine law, we could all give the information to Superintendent Kalis, but he could not give it with us, because that would, in essence, be a dialogue between the board members.
We want to avoid that.
So we would only be able to see that at the meeting. Right?
Well, we can have the information, we just can't discuss it.
That's great.
If we can have the information, we just can't start exchanging notes.
While you were paying for discussing it, once you've received each other's comments, then you're complying with the sunshine laws?
Okay.
Is it a symbol to say an agree or disagree, that way, if we all disagree, it's agreement too, right?
Right.
So, right, so we can just send it by agree, disagree, and when do you want to...
Right, so my, my thought is we would, Dr. Kalis, would, if we had our feedback to you by Friday, the 21st, would that work, that'd be almost a week?
I think so.
Okay, so, so if we could all provide our feedback to, to Dr. Kalis by the 21st, I'm going to put that in my calendar, then that, that way we'll operate, hopefully we'll make it pretty efficient, and we'll have marching orders, and I am, I'm the delegate for the board, so I plan to be there, and so I will have my marching orders for voting when I'm there.
And again, at that meeting, though, they may change one of those lines on the, kind of on the go, right, they've done that in the past?
No.
Okay.
No, you vote on them, and then there are other things that may come up, you know, like, that can come up from the floor.
Okay.
Additional, but those have to be run through OSBA, but you don't know what those are until you get there.
Okay.
So, so there's no way to...
You're on your own, you're on your own.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Anything else on the OSBA platform?
I don't believe so, I know we're, you were the alternate, Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Krasinski, so I know we're, we're fully ready to go, we'll be credentialed, and so that will be on November 14, and we'll be good to go. And that's all I have.
Okay. One other piece of new business I just wanted to bring up, and I don't know, Jim, Dr. Kalis or Mr. Placko, did you bring the policy 0165, if you know which one it is now?
0165.
Yeah, it's just around the agenda and some of the conversation the last two months that we've had, and I just wanted to get everybody's opinion, make sure we agree with kind of the approach to the agenda, that once it's set approximately 48 hours before the meeting, that we won't make changes to it, we can make the changes here at the table with the session, and I just wanted, and I pulled it, because I was like, they're asking a policy that talks about it, so I wanted to bring the policy for everybody, for us to review. We think that there needs to be a change, I think we bring it to the policy committee, and we can figure out what those changes are. And the only reason I want to do that, I just want to make sure we're being transparent, so if something goes out on an agenda, I guess I want to make sure if somebody reads it, we're not pulling something in it, I just want to be transparent of what's out there, and we pull, we should have a reason why. So I just pulled this for everybody, I don't know if there's any initial thoughts, or you want to take it away, and kind of think about it, and determine if you feel there's something that needs to be changed in the policy.
I think one of the things that I've continued to say is that's why I feel like we should vote on acceptance of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, because at that point in time, we can take things out if we so choose, and have an amended agenda upfront. I mean, that's something that many board, that's pretty common, so...
That's a pretty common procedure.
I don't know where you put it in here, but it's an approval of the agenda item. And then when we come to the consent agenda part, if there's something somebody wants removed, that should have been... It would have already been voted on upfront to remove, or to accept the agenda as is, once it's accepted, that's your agenda. Any other thought on that, or do you guys want some time to take it away, and we can have a discussion at the policy? As a matter of fact, that's how it's written in our board handbook. So our policy does not match the handbook right now? Just saying.
So, Mrs. Hardin, do, is that something you would think we should discuss at the, at the, at the policy meeting weekend?
They do, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, so I think that that suggestion from Mrs. Grassey makes some sense, but we can discuss it at policy and make recommendations to the board.
The one other thing I noted is that it does say it's the responsibility of the superintendent, I think we also need to add the treasurer to that, I know we've spent a lot of time on our agenda, just so it's clear that Mr. Placko is technically pulling the agenda together for us. In letter A.
Great, any other discussion on that, or any other new business?
This, so, this won't be today, but I'll just bring it up, it'll be an agenda item for the next meeting. Our, our hiring policy probably needs to be reviewed, we're, we're open for a lot of liability right now, and there are other districts that do it a little bit differently, but it'll be an agenda item at the next meeting, so it's just something to consider.
So I guess, I mean, is there a policy that you're referring to specifically?
Well, to put it very simply, if, if a person is hired and the board approves later or disapproves later, if a person is hired, there would be three different parts of the law where they would have an expectation of having the job, and if the board did not approve that hire, after they had been hired, we're open for reliability. So I think we just need to change that. It would be a minor change, other districts do it, so it would be a cookie cutter copying what other, other districts do.
So I'm just going to go back and make a commentary that these are the kinds of things that should be run through our board president, our superintendent, before we have our meeting, so that we can have new, old business and other items that want to be discussed, so that we're all aware of what those items are going to be before we come to a meeting, so that people are able to at least respond to what's being brought up at the table.
Oh, great, that's going to be agenda at the next meeting, so...
And I hope that if we're to talk about something about legality, that we're talking to Mr. McIntyre as well, if we think that we're doing something that's not right, I would hope that our council is involved in that conversation.
Any other discussion at this point? That brings us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First one is Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. So there will be a meeting in October, I know Dr. Vassich is working on bringing in new members to the Business Advisory Council, I know he's identified some police and fire department employees that are willing to come in and share their perspective with us, so he is working on putting up together what the activity will be, so our first one will be in October this year. Next one, Mr. Fishel, Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association Liaison.
There was no curriculum meeting due to an unfortunate death this, this month, and then also, the alumni has a golf outing this Saturday, it's a scramble at Painsville Country Club, and probably a little bit too late to get a foursome to go in, but if someone wanted to put a foursome in, it's at 12:30 at Painsville Country Club, and I guess you could contact me if you have any interest in doing that, and my number is 440-231-1960, if I don't answer, you can text. So I know the alumni committee would love to have more people, but that's what's going on, then the duck race will be in October, and both of those events are with Harvey, and they're both fundraisers, and so more information on that, but it's very simple, you put the yellow ducks in the water, and whichever one is pulled out, it's a raffle, that person wins the money, so that's coming in October with, down at Helen and Hayes in Wyman Park, I believe is where it's planned to be, and again, as a collaboration between the two high schools.
Mr. Fishel, can we get a Curriculum Committee meeting on the calendar while we're all together right now, since we didn't?
Sure.
Is that okay, Melissa? Did you have it?
Yeah, I would suggest maybe Tuesday, October 4th.
I would agree, I'm fine with that.
7:30?
7:30 it is.
Oh, yeah.
What fun, that was...
I liked it, that was super easy.
Something I found to go over, huh?
Here, are you making a note of that?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Of course, we have a check with Mrs. Lanning, so she may or may not be there, depending on what she knows going on with the day, but she's a secretary, so we'll keep it on the books, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other points?
That's it.
All right. Next is Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Hatt.
Sure, so we have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on the 19th of this month, and actually, before we, we had the meeting, two ladies from the RBI club came and spoke with us, and, and many of you are aware that, although we have some aspects of our athletic fields are in pretty good shape, that the baseball fields are not really including that for the most part, and so we had some discussion on things we might do. That discussion really needs to be taken into the totality of, you know, what we're going to do with Riverside and upgrades and improvements to the school and to the grounds, so I think it makes sense to, the consensus was, it makes sense to interweave that, the conversation on the athletic fields, particularly the baseball fields, into that overall conversation. But there was, you know, as a one-off item, there was some discussion, I believe we're going forward in putting a, a homerun fence in the JV, on the JV field for baseball, so at this point, we will be able to know what a homerun is, and not who can get the ball faster in from the outfield, or, you know, who's racing around the bases. Some additional things, the boiler at LaMouth is still in the process of being replaced, they have run into some issues with, with parts, but the expectation, and Mr. Arlesic is still very confident it will be there before we need to really turn the heat on, so fingers crossed, if we are in a situation where, where we need to bring in the portable boiler as we did at the end of last heating season, we can still do that, but, but we are hopeful that we won't need that added expense to provide heat at, at LaMouth, and he did say that a brick building does retain heat longer, so that, I know that I typically start having some heat in my house around mid-October, but he said that a building like LaMouth would, would last a little bit longer before heat was actually needed. So we did have some new hires, we hired somebody with some HVAC capabilities, so he will be able to work both with the new HVAC system at Park, Parkside, and Riverview, as well as frankly with the, some of the units we have in... units we have in windows throughout the district. So that's good. And we did get a new custodian for the fieldhouse, so that will be an improvement there as well. And there, there was, you know, I think things come, kind of go, come and go in streaks. There were several issues that, that Mr. Arlessic talked about that all cropped up in the span of a few days in different buildings. Sometimes things happened in droves and that happened in droves, but, but I, he was able to, he and his, and his staff were able to address them and get things back online. So I, that's, those are the main things that I had. Mrs. Grassi, was there anything I missed?
No.
And that's all I've got?
We did discuss, there's a change order on tonight's agenda that we did discuss during that meeting to replace the domestic water lines within the boiler room that was not part of the original scope. And my understanding is, I think the conversation happened after that meeting to open everything up and running and fire it up the first time on NEOEA then back to April 14th. But, you know, obviously we'll, we'll see if it actually happens. They seem pretty confident that they're, they're being ready.
Yep.
Were the water lines, then I was identifying after they started into the project?
Yeah, once they, they opened the room and we were able to see all of the existing water lines that were remaining, they decided that they should be replaced.
That's all I've got.
All right. Policy Committee and Booster Organization Liaison, Mrs. Harden.
Um, last week, our PTA was talking, they're trying to get a meeting going for this year to get a first meeting on, so it just looks like right now it's still kind of emailing back and forth to get availability. And then policy, Mr. Hack, we need to schedule that right now.
Sure.
As well. I'll send an email. Just jot it down here. Yeah.
We are meeting with you all up next week on the most recent policy release. So, you know, they scheduled mid-October time, so we should be ready for discussion for that policy committee and top of the, the, the.
We'll do that, then that sounds good. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
I just want to respond to something that was earlier and mention about some of the content that we're teaching here at Riverside. In terms of the transgenderism book, my recollection was that my disappointment was the fact that it wasn't embedded first, the material in the book. We didn't look at whether or not it was age appropriate as well and that the parents didn't know that that book was being read. That's what I meant when I said that, that would happen again, it's the fact that we needed to go through a certain process with any of our material to see. With everything that is being taught here at school, it's almost impractical to know every single thing that's in every book or any, every instructional piece of material. Kind of goes back to that argument that we talked about before about whether or not we need to let parents know what the instructional material is in every single class or every piece of material. It's just impractical. It's almost impossible, especially being, you know, even for that teachable moment where you find something maybe in the media and you want to bring it to class because it coincides with what you're, you know, and if it's not embedded, you know, maybe some people might find it inappropriate. But the other things are, we're trying to get students to read material that they're interested in. Okay, that's number one. And I think we've got to be real careful about starting to ban material. I'm not saying that all material's appropriate, but you've got to be careful about that. The one piece of material that is inappropriate, some people might think inappropriate to law enforcement, we actually gave that material to our resource officers to take a read and they weren't offended by it at all. Now, that's just a small portion, but they're out of, out of practicality in their, in their buildings and we just ran it by them. And I understand there's no room for hate, but you also have to consider there are some classics that no one's complaining about right now. Huckleberry Finn, Catcher in the Rye, The Great Gatsby. Am I, am I always supposed to be pulling those books off shelves? We've got to be real careful not to start banning material. It's not a good thing. And if you, if anyone has read some of those classics, you know, there's a lot of inappropriate things in some of those, uh, books, classic books, great books. I wouldn't want to ban those either, but there are some parts in those books that are offensive to people. And like I said, I just, I just need to be real careful. I know we had more conversation about it in, in Curriculum Committee and that's good. I think that discussion is a good thing to have. And moving forward, if there are issues, we'd be glad to take a look at them and, and determine what we think. And we're not going to make everybody happy with what we teach. We're not. It's just, it's impossible. But we can do what we can to make the material, material reflect, you know, our community and its values and everything else. That's what's great about being a part of a school is we have at least that ability to look at standards that are provided by the state and determine how to get there. And I guess more discussion about it. I'd sort of put it out there.
I would just like to add, I mean, as a parent with a child in the district, I have an eighth grader and an 11th grader, and I was recently sent home papers where I had to choose the book. I had the option to say, what could my child read? So there was options for them. So I think in most cases, we're trying to do that. We're trying to give that option and that choice to our parents to say, I agree, I don't agree. And, and I think what Dr. Kala said, if we disagree, we need to call in and talk to the teacher or talk to the principal or talk to somebody about why we disagree and make sure that we're having those conversations.
I've got to be honest, there's some things that I see sometimes I don't like. I do. Like you said, it's like you're not going to be able to please out your money, you're not going to be the superintendent, so anyway. All right. These are just our numbers, our current numbers. We're pretty steady. I don't know if I'm going to be presenting this to the board in the next few months, but right now, numbers look good in each of our, each of our buildings. We have 253 kindergartners, 348 first graders, 294 second graders, 311 third, 310 fourth, and 268 fifth. We hover anywhere between 250 and 370 usually with our enrollment over the years. At Lamute, we have 600, 267 sixth graders and 312 seventh graders. We're total 579. And at the high school, we have 1,741. We hover around 750 to 1,800 students. So we're, we're pretty, pretty good with our numbers. As most people know, the State Report Cards were released on September 15th. It's a little bit different report card. Instead of having letter grades that are, that are going by numbers, but the numbers are five categories which can be applied as grades as well. You know, baseline for proficiency or acceptance is three, but obviously you want better than three in that Likert scale of one to five. The areas of achievement, progress, early literacy gap closing, and graduation, college career workforce and military readiness will come in a later time. And actually, that's the next line. So what we're going to do is we're going to step the board through these preliminary scores, talk a little bit about what each component means, and take a look at our scores in our districts.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Perfect. Oh, same with the other way. Okay. So the first component is achievement that we got rated on. And this, they bundled together, if you remember, indicators where they did each individual test score and our performance index. So we get one rating now on achievement. One thing I want to note about this is when you're thinking about our achievement rating, this is, this is a measure of our district at one point in time. So when every student took whatever test they're measuring, that was their score, okay? So it's how kids performed overall, and then the performance index takes into account how many kids we had in each category, whether it was advanced, limited, basic, those kinds of categories, okay? And here are our scores in each building. Again, three being a C. I mean, they, they.
According to the state, a three means, meets state standards and academic achievement. A four is exceeding the standard and five significantly exceeds. Two is needing support to meet state standards and a one is need significant support.
All right. Thank you. Next one is progress. So this measure looks at our growth over the year. So this is the one looking at whether or not students made a year's worth of growth over the course of the year. And this kind of speaks to Mr. Hack when we spoke about are our students extremely behind? Are we two years behind? You know, we talked a little bit about that. So our scores are out now and there's definitely some areas for improvement, but nothing that I feel where the district is, is years behind where we should be. We knew we were going to be a little bit behind. Some schools did better than others, but overall, we're progressing as a district fairly So again, a couple of schools where we need to, to see some improvement, but not to the point where I think we knew we were going to struggle a little bit.
This was, this was a category that a lot of county schools, we compare our schools to other county schools, and this is the one where most districts took ahead was the problem. So there's a, there's going to be a slide that shows the scores, the component scores compared between, comparison between Lake County districts.
So if I may, if you could go back to that slide. So, so obviously we do span the spectrum pretty, pretty well there. So what, what are the thoughts of, you know, the, the schools that, that are below a three? Certainly we want you to, you know, ideally we want higher than a three. What, what are the thoughts on how to help, help those schools get to that, that higher or achievement level?
So we're looking at interventions that we have in place and how can we start to close the gap for some of those students who are scoring behind? Some of it might just be we need them to be in school for two years. You know what I mean? To kind of just tighten that up a little bit. The other thing is, is the curriculum audit that we've done and looking at what is our instruction look like across the board in all of our classes? So where you see a little bit of disparity perhaps between some of the elementaries, maybe we need to take a look at what we're doing across the board in fourth grade, you know, reading or fifth grade math. But that's the process that we're going through this year that I'm hoping will help us to tighten up what our foundation is. And then looking at those interventions in some of the schools that were a little bit lower and how do we close that gap for some of our more needy students?
And then so there, so there'd be regular interactions?
Oh, yes. Our whole, our professional development this, for this whole school year is focused around that curriculum audit and building upon that each time teachers have a chance to meet. So periodically, our next one is in November. So we're building on what we did in August. Again, looking at instruction and then ultimately building common assessments so that teachers are able to look at that data. So let's say all geometry teachers give the same test in the same timeframe, maybe not exactly on the same day, but, and then they can look at it and say, where did we do well? Where did we not do well? What do we need to do better?
Good job. Dr. Flacco, these are things that you've already been doing, right? Since that curriculum audit?
Yes, oh yeah, that we already started. So hopefully we're going to, now you know, you don't see, the results in education aren't immediate, but they are steps that we were already taking long before these scores came out.
And these scores came out last week, correct? Is that when I?
No, the report card came out. The scores came out in June, I think.
Okay. So we've been able to dig into the scores and try to understand some of the root causes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the next component is early literacy. And this has actually three parts to it. So one thing they look at is our proficiency on the, the reading component of the ELA test. So they're looking at the third grade test, so that's the first year that students are tested. And they're only looking at the reading part of it. So they're able to pull out whichever questions apply strictly to reading, although it's called the English Language Arts Test. They look at proficiency on the reading portion of that test. They will get promotion to fourth grade is the second part of that. And then they look at how we improve students not on track to on track. And I taught, I did this with you guys before. So at the beginning of, of the year in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, kids get a diagnostic test. We use math. And we determine based on that score, are you on track? And they're always looking at passing the third grade reading test, okay? So are you on track based on where you are to pass that test, wherever that might be in your education? So we take that score. If you're not on track, we put you on a reading improvement plan and we put some interventions in place to try to again, close that gap. The next year, we give the test and we, they look at, okay, did you move any of those not on track kids to on track? So are you closing the gap from kindergarten to first or do those kids remain off track all the way through? So that's a component of this rating. And so that's why you only see it at the elementaries because it only applies to K3. Okay, the next one is gap closing. So gap closing looks at how we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable, vulnerable students. And those, in order for us to have a sub, these are based on federally identified subgroups. So it could be English learners. It could be Black, Hispanic, multiracial. It could be students with disabilities. It could be economically disadvantaged students. So you're going to see individual schools. If you dug down into this data though, what you would notice is some schools, you'd have to have 15 students in a, in a subgroup in order for it to count. So you might look at a smaller school like Melbridge and they may not have the same subgroups that say Riverside does because they don't have 15 groups in a cap, 15 kids in a cap for it. So that's just something to look at or to think about when you look at this particular measure. So gap closing, I, we did pretty well. I'm overall as a district, especially happy with the progress that we're making with those students and the direction that we're moving in with, with our kids that are sometimes the neediest.
With, with that being said, it's my understanding that in all of Lake County, there were only two schools that were able to attain the five rating all across the board. And one of them happens to be our, of our schools. The school that got fives all the way across the board is Parkside. It's the only elementary school in Lake County that was able to do that. I have Tim St. Clair here, our principal. I'd ask him just briefly, just to address the board real quick.
We are very proud. It's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of dedication from my teachers, support staff, coaches, Melissa, our parents and our students. They take the test seriously, work very hard on it. Something that we, we are constantly looking at map data, going back and looking and seeing, okay, what can we do to get these kids out of the hump? What can we do? And it's not just our third, fourth, and fifth, as you saw, the, the K3 literacy. It starts at kindergarten. And we're talking five-year-olds, getting them in school. Last year was crazy because they had never been to schools, you know? They had never been to preschool for two years and then they were in school and they didn't have a lineup in the line. And that's not just at Parkside, that's pretty much everywhere. It's just a lot of hard work and we, we do look at the data and, you know, we, we try our best and everyone does. And it's just, we're fortunate that we have the teachers that we have, the students that we have, and the families that we have because if any of those three are not in line with what we want to do, and plus I think we do a good job of making our school very well. we do a good job of making our school a very welcoming place for all of our kids. I think they love coming to school. They run in every morning. We tell them to walk, but they run in. But they also run out. So we work them hard and, and, you know, we're, we're just very fortunate and we're very appreciative and I'm humbled.
I'd like to add one more thing. Mr. St. Clair knows the names of every single student in his school.
In his old school.
In his old school.
Large majority of our district.
That's true. Another component is graduation. We wanted to talk about graduation before the high school.
Right. So graduation obviously is the, you get, they combine the four-year graduation rate and the five-year graduation rate. The minute a student steps into ninth grade, the clock starts. So it doesn't matter if they start with us, they don't start with us, they're retained, they don't have enough credits. Whatever the situation is, the minute they are clocked as a ninth grader, that's when the graduation starts. They're closed, it's called.
This is one area I think we could do better. I really do, I think a lot of this is, more on us than anything else. We need to, we need to track our kids to make sure that they're, they're, you know, they're on track to graduate and get some remediation. We do that now, we do. But we do have somewhat of a transient population too that moves around and in and out of the district. We have to, we have to better track the kids and make sure that once they step in that they get through in that four-year period. We were probably two, three percent just shy of a, of a four. But I think we were only, I think one or, I think there are three districts that were three or under, I'm not mistaken. We'll see in just a minute here. Yeah, there's one, two, three districts in our, in Lake County about threes and then there's one district that has a one, all the rest are fours and fives.
So if, if, just to make sure I'm, I'm clear. So if, we, we have a student who is at Riverside in ninth grade, but the family moves to a different district or he, whatever, he's no longer with us. Is that student still tracked as a Riverside student?
No. But the student who comes in as a fourth-year ninth grader and lives in Riverside, we take hit for. So it goes both ways. You know what I mean? So, yeah.
Okay.
So the college career workforce and military readiness is a mouthful. However, this is, I don't know, if I have to pick a component that I think is really exciting, this is, you find state report cards information exciting. This is one that I do because this is really starting to look at how are we preparing our students to move beyond our walls? Which is ultimately, our goal is to make you productive members of society. So there is no rating on this one. I think it was 24, 25 before it starts to get rated. But what I, what we did put into the slideshow, and you can, can look here, Jim, is they tell you how prepared was 2021 graduating class. And I'm glad that we have this information out now, although it's not being rated, because it shows areas where we are doing well. And what I'm excited about is these are things that we're already working on. So we're going to see changes in this data, I know for absolute certain. So it's difficult to see ACT prep is at the top, ACT remediation free is the second bar. You've got SAT participation and SAT remediation free. We don't give that as a district, so if students take it elsewhere, it may not be reported back to us. Which that is, as long as you're giving one or the other, that can, you know what I mean? You're, you're doing those standardized tests. The honors diploma is the next one at, at 22.9. Wait, okay, sorry. So the next three though are the three that we are working hard on. Industry recognized credentials. So how many of our students, what percentage of our students are that? And you know that we're starting courses at the high school that are going to allow kids to earn those credentials, so that percentage should go up. Advanced placement participation. We added an additional AP course and we're always looking at what other courses we can offer. And then AP scores, they look at three or better. So hopefully, we have an AP cohort where those teachers are meeting together and meeting outside with other AP teachers. Because sometimes you're a singleton, which means you're the only person that teaches AP chemistry, for example. So there's no professional learning that goes on as much here because nobody else teaches that. So we've broadened that base and Chris Vassich was instrumental in that at the high school. So we should see, we're actively working on that. And then the next slide, so, Jim's going to have what he says. International backglow, we don't have that here, so we'll never see a change in that one. We have ACT or SAT remediation free, we talked about that. AP scores also is the next one. But then we have a couple here that are showing as zeros. We have military enlistment. I'm not, this may be a data recording issue. It might also be when the data gets recorded. So you can't just say you're going into the military. In order for this to be counted, I believe you have to ask a test and there may be some discrepancy in when those things happen. But that's something that's on my radar to look at because we know for a fact, we have students that enlisted in the military. So I'm not quite sure why that went, so I need to look at that. Apprenticeship acceptance, as we start to create these courses and start to align some of our programming with what's going on in the business world, we should be able to align and see some of that apprentice acceptance. Pre-apprentice, completion, I'm sorry. So we are starting some pre-apprenticeships here at school that will then lead into those apprenticeships should students decide to. And then the last one, who will reach, Jim's probably, you should have printed a figure. I can't, I can't even read what the last one says. What's the last one? This one?
Ohio means jobs.
Oh, the Ohio means jobs readiness seal. Thank you. And there we, excuse me, all of our students will be actively working on in English III. So that's not to say everybody will get it, but we're embedding it as part of the curriculum so that they get that experience in 11th grade. So we should definitely see that improve. So I'm excited about that.
These are the components for all of Lake County schools. I am going to send this PowerPoint to the board. I didn't make that for you, but I'll do that in just a few minutes here. All the things going on are quality profile, which is a companion piece to the report card. It talks about all the great things that are going on in the district outside of just test scores. We print it out once a year. It's actually online right now on our website and it will go out to every address that is in our districts in early October, right?
Yes.
Early October. Here by and says we'll give the mail early October. Said we're printing it out, right?
Just went to the printer today.
Again, just updating the board on our resource officers and school safety officers. Again, we have the two full-time at the Riverside campus. We also hired Karen Sweet to work the door and then we have a school safety officer at Almud. His name is Michael Bruni, very active as well, a veteran police officer from, I believe, Mentor. And things are working out really well. This is Mr. Collins. He is, was the, I believe he was the chief in Willoughby, if I'm not mistaken.
Lily Hills.
Lily Hills. And he is also very active. We have him moving throughout the building there. Actually, we wanted to have at least an office for him somewhere and he wasn't really interested. He wanted to be moving about throughout the whole day. He's spending some time at both Buckeye and Melbridge for the time being. Homecoming parade and pep rally is Thursday, September 29th at 6:30. Over the past year, we changed it, but then another story, we're starting down at the Historical Society and working our way eastbound into the, into the property. So if anyone's interested in coming, they can line up long grass and the long 84 blocks, the parade blocks, and it's a great time, pep rally after the parade. Strategic planning, we have much update, where next meeting will be September 27th. As soon as that happens, I'll update the board. That concludes my report.
Dr. Kalas, I know we're still waiting to hire additional SSOs. Have you given update on that?
Yeah, they're still looking for some people. We've also reached out to some of our own employees that it doesn't necessarily need to be someone that's currently employed by the Sheriff's Department, that if there are veterans out there, police officers that are maybe close to retirement or want to change, that they can call us or call the Sheriff's Department and go through a vetting or training there before they're hired. So if you know anyone out there that is a police officer in Ohio that would be interested in something like that, let us know and we'll see what we can do. Right now, I know they're having some difficulty getting bodies. I think UCL just hired, I think in the paper, said four police officers, if I'm not mistaken. And when Bobby saw that, he was pretty surprised that they were able to get four bodies in one, in one category. It is difficult from what I understand, but we'll get there. And people are very excited about having their deputies in the two older elementary schools at this point.
Thank you. Is that all? That brings us to the treasurer's report and committee updates. So finance and audit, personnel committee and strategic plan liaison, Mrs. Rossy.
Sure. We had a finance and personnel committee meeting on September 15th at 8:00 AM. The first thing that we discussed with the personnel, we talked about our bus driver shortage and the fact that, I don't remember, I think it was News Channel 5 was here and did some reporting on our bus driver positions and the fact that we do have some individuals who are taking on dual roles as, you know, teachers' drivers, staff people drivers. You know, we have five of them?
No, five.
Oh, it was Channel 5.
Channel 5.
Oh, Channel 5 and eight. Okay, so it was Channel 5 and eight, but I only knew about five. So we talked about that. We discussed all the different things that were on our board agenda. One of the large things that we have on our agenda this, this evening is the permanent appropriations for the school year. I just want to remind everyone that the appropriations give the administration the authority to spend the dollars that we have. And you had the listing of the appropriations that were in our board packet. You know, the 001 through the 300 funds are your basic funds and the 400 funds are state, are state dollars and your 500 funds are basically federal dollars. I would like to point out that there's in excess of $15 million that's on this, these appropriations that are not general fund dollars, so it's not the 001. And we usually always talk about the general fund because that's what's on our five-year forecast, but I just want to remind people that there's another $15 million that we have approval authority over. And we do discuss contracts and whatever that could pay out of all these other funds. But most people are just focused on the five-year forecast. That's just one, one of these items. So I just want to make people aware of that. So we talked about that. Those are on the agenda for this evening. Those can change at any time and if we get additional dollars, Gary, that's when Gary brings those to the board and we amend those appropriations. We had, talked about school bus purchases. We're going to try and use some of our federal dollars to get some of those, those ARPA funds, to get some bus and transport vans. So that was a point of discussion. We did talk about our security positions and that we're working on the final ones and then at that point, then we'll be able to go for Riverview and Parkside once we have the other elementaries in place. We have a lot on our agenda. We talked about the security vestibules for Riverside High School, the booth that we're getting, that we have some changes that we're thinking about doing with that. So they had submitted a plan and we were going to make some adjustments to that. So we should be seeing that coming online soon. We talked about the audit and that is ongoing, our fiscal audit is ongoing. And we did discuss, you know, we have a grant acceptance for some HVAC dollars from the Bureau of Workers Compensation that Mr. Placko had worked on getting that, so he can discuss that in further detail if he chooses to. We have support agreements for all of our PTOs and all of the youth organizations that are on our agenda this evening, with the exception of a few who haven't gotten the data and weren't on this. So I, okay, I forwarded the information so that will get signed and I think you have all the rest of the information. So we have those and we do that on an annual basis so that the district support organizations comply with our board policies and whatever they're given the board policies and they review those. So they sign off on that. Oh, and I, and, and we did talk about our resource officers. Our school resource officers seem to go places around here. You know, I would just like to put a good word into Captain Izzo on his promotion. He was in the district as a school resource officer way back when, I don't even remember how many, how many years ago, but you know, 17 promotions later, he is now, what is his position now? Deputy?
Chief deputy.
Chief deputy.
In the near future.
Yeah, so that's really awesome. So we'll be going places.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Not yet, but, so I just wanted to offer congratulations on that we discussed that. And that's all I have.
Great, well. Thank you. Treasurer's report?
This is, we actually pretty much covered almost all my notes.
Sorry. We're done.
And we will verve, verve to that. The grant, the HVAC grant that out, the Bureau of Workers Compensation, $15,000 on a grant that will be able to, the public entities purchase the MERV 13 filters that go into our systems. We use those currently, but this is the way of getting a few extra dollars supplement that will come out of our, our general fund. One thing, the, we talked about the Ohio Safe, Ohio's capable safety grant, we're ordering $50,000 per building for Buckeye and Melbridge, the move from Riverside campus for those security vestibules. We did submit the application, we additional $50,000 per building. That deadline's October 3rd and I imagine it will appear something within a month or two following that deadline. Last time was about six-month turnaround time, but I think they're going to move much quicker on this round. On tonight's agenda is a proposal for the owner of, I think we'll kind of discuss that when we get to that agenda later. And then for the, the school bus purchase, we're using some American Rescue Plan IDA dollars to purchase three, go towards three of the buses. We currently have on the agenda to go out and bid for seven special needs buses and for two transit vans. We've not really replaced any of those anytime in the last many years that we've done the bus replacements because of the, back about five, six years ago. We're using about $200,000 of those stimulus dollars that we have for IDA purposes, we look towards three of those buses. So it still maintains the same, we're kind of expediting our replacement cycle because the special needs buses have really need addressing and slowly need to be replaced. So that's why, that was the logic behind purchasing the seven buses and the two vans. But they're going out to bid through Ohio Schools Council and we'll be pricing later on this fall and we'll subsequently approve the purchase once we know that pricing comes in. So this is just going out to bid. We can adjust, we can go more or less than what, unless I'm approved tonight, we'll get a subsequent approval to actually approve that purchase. And that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Great, that brings us to public participation. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Also, we will ask you to stand. Only reason we're asking you to do that is for the recording. There was some feedback that people couldn't be heard or seen by people viewing the recordings. We just want to make sure if somebody does come back and watch it, that they can hear and see the person speaking. Anybody? Oh, one moment. You're good? All right. So anybody wishing participate? Yes?
Hi, I'm Christina Sherwood. For those of you that don't know me, I teach 10th and 12th grade English here on campus. I teach Comp 1, Comp 2 for Lakeland on campus as well. And I just want to kind of echo what Dr. Kalas was talking about with some of the material. Up until this year, I was part of the eighth grade team for four years. So I'm very aware of both the story and the Greek and Latin vocabulary. So I just want to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what that is. The story specifically is a story that we use in the unit on perspective and it helps us teach perspective and how other people can us teach perspective and how other people can kind of see how other people see things. Specifically, it's narrated by a 14-year-old boy who is aware that his father has had his own kind of differences with law enforcement. I've been married to a law enforcement officer for 26 years, so this is not something that I have ever viewed as discriminatory or offensive in any way. It's handled very well in the story and it's one of those things that we use so that we can teach empathy to our students and how to kind of see where other people have come from. So it's a really good story, the kids really like it, which makes it easier to read. And the Greek and Latin roots for vocabulary, you know, I think the, the big issue is making sure that we're teaching our kids how to decode words, because we're trying to build competency in reading, we're trying to build comprehension skills, and if we're not teaching them the roots and the prefixes and the suffixes, the, the danger isn't really what misogyny is. The danger is a kid not ever knowing what that is and then just accepting someone else's definition of it. So what we're trying to do is give them the ability to decode for themselves and think for themselves, and there are unpleasant words, there are unpleasant ideas around us, and, I mean, George Orwell would tell you that that was part of the reason why people were trying to shrink our vocabulary once upon a time. It's our job to make sure that, that we're raising kids that can read everything and develop their own opinions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
John, you're at Painesville Township. I just want to mention a few things. First of all, I don't agree, I, I don't agree with a lot of things I hear in these meetings I've been coming for quite a while. I go to meetings throughout the country, not just Painesville, all throughout the country, and I could talk to people, school boards, I talk to OSBA, the NSBA, the COSPA, COS-SBA now. I even call the Department of Education in the United States and ask them questions. And I'll call our Attorney General. Attorney General will not give you legal advice, but he will explain things that are in Ohio Vice Code and so forth, he won't give you legal advice. So, a lot of things I hear, I know for a fact are not correct. And the thing about it is, until you do your homework, and Mr. Fishel, I want to thank you, sir, I know when you were elected to office, you had more votes than any other, like 25% more votes than the closest board member. And I know for a fact, I, I talk to people throughout the county and led by Riverside District, that they appreciate what you do and I thank you for what you do. And Mr. Hack, I know you voted against the levy and I want to thank you both for doing that, just like we talked about smart object, I work for a Fortune 100 company, and the thing about it is, I know what smart objectives are. And I, in my opinion, that was never taken in consideration by putting that on at this present time. And the thing about it is, and just like we talked about school ratings and stuff, as you know, I talk to OSB members and a number of them, and they also, yeah, in the last 10 years, we've changed how to rate the schools four times in 10 years, but no one mentions that. And I said, well, let's just lower the basketball hoop down to four feet so everybody can dunk. Talk to the HR people and they're having, even the Air Force is saying, they can't find qualified people, even people may come up and try to get and enlist and they're just not qualified for various reasons. And the thing about it is, it's just that, and I congratulate Parkside, the principal and the staff members for doing what they do. Because in all reality, what I feel here at Riverside, and I, I went for Riverside, and the thing about it, what I feel is that everybody should get the levy. Are the taxpayers getting their money's worth? In my opinion, no. We should be getting more. Our children should be getting more. And the parents, who are the true parents, and the teachers, the parents are the teachers. And that's the way it should be. And our world has changed. About the literature being handed out now, it should be viewed. The literature being handed out today is a lot different than it was years ago. So I disagree with that statement. The world has changed, in my opinion, not for the better. We've got to do, like I say, transparency, oversight, accountability, people who don't follow the rules, there should be accountability. Thank you for allowing me to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Yes.
Jamie Coulter, I have a son here in 8th grade. So going back to the curriculum in which was presented tonight, I did my due diligence on what was my child has been reading, and I can tell you, I looked up the authors in which authored these short stories that these children are reading. So when you, Matt Day Lepena, he's the one that read How to Transform an Everyday Ordinary Hoop Court Into a Place of Higher Learning and You at the Podium. Now, I agree, the story had some really great things, but when you look up who this Matt Peña is, a lot of his writings have been removed from the classroom because of the views in which he has. Yes, he takes his stories and he makes them what they call positive emotionally and morally, but he also puts in his stories critical race theory. And in schools such as in Arizona, where critical race theory is banned, all of his stories have been banned from the classroom. The other author that we have, Jethlyn Woodson, who wrote Main Street, she writes about her, a lot of her stories about her time growing up in Brooklyn, not about the other places that you grew up in, like Columbus, Ohio and South Carolina. She has also been banned from schools because she has been teaching social, economic, physical, sexual and racial boundaries, also known as critical race theory. So maybe, and we're looking at this stuff, we may not have time to vet it, but we should be able to vet these authors. And if these authors aren't accepted in all of our schools across the nation, then maybe they shouldn't be accepted in this school. Thank you.
Any additional public participation?
Sorry. So I'm Chris Wong, I'm from Hainip. So I've been coming to the board meetings just for a couple of months now. I basically came here to support my daughter, who graduated a couple of years, electric computer gentleman, and definitely felt like there was quite a bit of bigotry, racism, negative thoughts towards others, and I know I've heard comments in this room about, you know, we can't expect people to, everybody to like each other, and that's not certainly what I'm talking about. But we can't expect people to have respect for each other and to treat people with kind of courtesy. And that's what, I've just been utterly shocked at how these meetings have gone the last three months that I've been here. And to talk about, we shouldn't teach misogyny as bad, I, I don't know if it was talked about that we were kind of putting he and misogynist together, but misogyny is horrible. It should, we should be allowed to talk about that in a school and teach people that. I, I don't understand how possibly it could be thought of as inappropriate discussion. And, and because we talk about what's supposed to be taught in a school, and we need to teach more than 2 plus 2 is 4 and how to read a sentence. There's humanities, there's English, there's history, there's social studies, that people need to be taught as well. And it utterly makes sense that we're talking about making books. So that wasn't going to be the topic I wanted to talk about, by the way, today, but you guys pulled this out of me. So I really wanted to talk about this for the last minute. The, I, I hope everybody knows, we talked about the, the school levy here, the bond levy that went up. Does everybody know the percentage of, that people voted for? I'm guessing you guys probably, why not? It was 24%. I, I've never seen a lower amount of people voting on a school, on a, on a poor levy. And you might think that's because of the terrible levy. No, it's because we are so divided, we are fighting each other, and if anybody believes this school system is well-funded enough, that, I, I don't understand what you're thinking of it, the schools are falling apart, except for two. So we, we need to fund better. We are the second lowest school system in a tax pay, tax rate per child perspective. The only lower is Fairport Promenade today. So that, we need to get, and somebody talked about in the previous meeting about how you guys need help, outside help to get on the same page to propose something that, that the community is going to buy into. Please do that, because you guys got to get on the same page if we have any chance of getting bond for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
The lower district is Perry and is Madison now, we're close to it.
Lower.
We're the third lowest, it was terrible.
My standard.
I can kind of hide.
Any other public comments? Yes.
Yeah, I'm Chris Weiss from Leroy. I wanted to publicly thank Dr. Kalas for helping out my son Ben with a letter of recommendation. Dr. Kalas, I'm in your debt for that, I'm very humbled by your words and the letter. Likewise, I want to congratulate Mr. St. Clair and his entire staff. My son Eric went to Parkside for the last three years, I see one of his teachers here, and I, I gotta say, couldn't be more well-prepared for taking the honors classes that he's in now at Lamuth, and I, I owe it to the teachers at Parkside for that, so once again, thank you all. Wanted to give you guys an update on a former graduate, A.J. Tilk. He's about to become a newly minted United States Army Soldier. He's scheduled to graduate basic training at Fort Jackson on September 29th. He's coming home for the weekend, next weekend, so if you happen to see him, wish him well and I'd like to ask that your prayers and thoughts go with him. He'll be reporting at Fort Belvoir, Virginia on October 3rd for helicopter mechanic training. Mr. Hack, you brought up the baseball fields. I don't know if you're aware, but we have a kid who's on the baseball team, sophomore, Tommy Angelucci, he's a life scout with Troop 68, and speaking with his family, his mother and I were classmates, Class 83 Lori, and they're contemplating doing his Eagle Scout project or having to do that, and the family has specifically talked about an interest in working on the baseball fields. So I recommend you reach out to the family, and I can say that the Weiss family, we put our weight behind Helping the Kids Initiative. We've known Tommy since he was a Cub Scout, okay? With regard to the SEL CRT, last month, there was a discussion brought up about, you know, many of the teachers feel threatened by how the parents feel. I, for one, as a parent, want to let you know that I'm not against the teachers, okay? What I'm against is SEL and CRT and the fact that there's a definite link between SEL and CRT, okay? I personally feel that great teachers are solid gold and I'm giving you some examples of Kathy Riley, who I had for Calculus, Sean McGowan, AP Chemistry, Gretchen Reed for Ground Aviation. There's a teacher who not only ran the log, but she created a class that we got science credit for called Ground Aviation. Many students, including myself, Steve Johnson, got our pilot's licenses because of her inspiration, and she's, she's a gold standard example, I think, of a teacher who reaches out and goes way beyond. She's still serving the school as alumni board member, and also Mary Jane Watson, who as a, um...
Counselor.
Counselor, is also still serving the district. Thank you.
Great. That brings us to our consent agenda. The first consent agenda item is Finance and Audit. So we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Finance and Audit Consent Agenda as recommended by the Treasurer, Items A through L. Second? Second. Just like to thank the anonymous donor who gave $50 to a leading teacher at Melrose Elementary to use as a seat in their classroom. Do we have any other discussion on A through L? If not, can we call the roll, Mr. Placko?
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Knessky.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lynn Grassy.
Aye. Motion carried. Next is Personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Personnel Consent Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, Items A through G.
Second. Thank you. Starting discussion. All right, if there is none, can we call the roll?
Lori Knessky.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lynn Grassy.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd. Aye. Motion carried. Curriculum and Programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the Curriculum and Programming Consent Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, make that motion.
I'll second.
On Letters A through F.
I'll second.
So discussion, can you take the roll?
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lynn Grassy.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Knessky.
Aye. Motion carried. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds and Operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds Consent Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, Items A to C. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishel. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure for the NV5 portion on the consent agenda, that we are all on the same page about the services that we expect from the owner's representation. So when we read this, there is no community action kind of baked into this, they're going to work. I know I had a thought that somehow the community needs to be involved, whether that's based on the feedback that we've already received, part of the strategic planning, or if there's some other way that we want to involve the community. So I just want to make sure that we are all aware, again, in short term, it's for the first half, just figuring out what the plans or what options we can present. And then second, what is everybody's kind of expectation on the community? Are we okay with just bringing in the strategic plan, pulling together the three ideas, kind of going back out to the community, getting feedback on three ideas, do we want them involved earlier? So just kind of opening that up for discussion to make sure we have the right thing here.
If I want to start, just kind of, Mr. Patrice and I, we've had discussions in NV5. The contract, just to sort of, is where it's based on an hourly rate, not to exceed the 53, just 53,625. That's all dependent on how many hours it takes to come up with various ideas, and we've talked about the community engagement piece of that and how does that work, you know. From my perspective, we didn't have a clear direction per se, what we really wanted at that point, but we do have, we do have prior input, obviously, from, we did surveys when we developed this too, we did surveys with the strategic plan, so we do have a lot of input. We did educational vision program back under TBA a couple of years ago, so we do have that input as well. And so there's been discussions about, do we as an administration board come up with several options and take those options to the community and get more input? Do we do a survey ahead of time in conjunction with, with this to kind of understand what are options, like should we build another elementary school, should we build an addition on the booth to do A through B? Kind of put different little pieces together now to see what the community might be interested in doing. And so, you know, to be clear, it is based on an hourly rate and we can't adjust that scope as needed, we don't use all the hours that we're, that we're, that we're using, and you know, the thought is too, that, that having an internal communication director that can help with that communication, so we can, you know, the thing about the owner's rep, it's, it can be customized to whatever our needs are. Assuming the board moves forward with tonight's proposal, I will send a link to each board member that NV5 would like to meet with each board member individually to get their input separately, so there's no other interference or anything from other board members, kind of compile that information and meet with the administration separately, so you kind of get some of the ideas going, so you can start compiling data and optional and kind of, and so, they have availability as early as next week, so when I send that link, you can schedule a time, and if you want something for an evening, I'll reach out and see if there's availability for, for an evening meeting, but most of them are doing standard work hours, but we didn't really get into that far in the discussion.
Yeah, and part of my concern is just what's been stated by President Grasky and also Treasurer Blacko. Doesn't seem that as we start to spend money, we're exactly sure where we're going, and that's part of the concern. If we are spending money and it's not focused, I'm curious that it wouldn't be, might not be spent effectively and efficiently. And to me, it's just logical. There are people that are fully aware of the buildings right now, and it wouldn't be difficult to spend an hour or two gathering that information, and it seems like we're going to kind of make it up as we go, and that's, that's concerning to me, because that's going to waste money.
Good, so I, I guess what I was saying is I just want to make sure everybody's aware that, again, this is for the first half, for somebody to come in, help us pull our ideas together, where we're thinking. ideas together, where we're thinking, make sure we're, if we're, again, we can bring in the strategic planning information. I think that this company will serve us right in the money we spend, trying to put a good strategy together for us moving forward that we can take to the public and take all of our opinions into consideration. So I guess I just want to make sure you interpreted what I was saying correctly. I'm not saying that I don't know that, I believe this is the right way to go. I think, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about what's in this statement of work.
So is there an involvement with the community in that contract?
So at this point, it does not say they will, and that's what we're talking about here, that's why I brought it to the table.
Yeah, and that's what I'm addressing, what you said, so maybe I misunderstood that, that maybe the meeting with the public is in there, or is it not meeting with the community?
And I think that's what Mr. Blackwell was saying, there's different ways to approach that. Again, it's per hour basis, and the scope can be adjusted, so that's something I just learned at this moment. So the scope can be adjusted to say that we want a public meeting. They can work with Mr. Carbine to create a survey, to do whatever. But again, I think that's what this board needs to decide, is do we use the strategic plan information? Consider that, let them talk to us, come away with three options, present to the community? Do we go out and survey the community right away? Consider that information as they talk to us? Pull that in beforehand, and then take three options to the community? Or do we just take a shot at it and not consider? Again, my thought is we do need to get, whether it's the feedback from the community from the strategic plan, which we have a lot of, we do need to bring that in somehow, at least. And again, go back out to the community again, once we have some options. I don't know what.
Yeah, so we definitely, obviously, need to bring community input into the process. It is, you know, this is not going to win the ballot at this point, it's not looking like it's going to win the ballot. So we do need to talk about it and take feedbacks. I think earlier, somehow earlier in the process, as we are formulating things, we need to engage the community upfront. My concern is that if we have three options and say, well, what do you want? How do we know truly what the community's input is? So I think that we need to get that in the formulation phase, I guess, I would say, is get some community input. But I think as we go along, we do need to keep people apprised of what's happening. But I think it's ultimately the board with, you know, obviously with the administration and other interested parties providing input, kind of focus on, hopefully, a single objective? Maybe not. But we definitely, I don't, sort of putting something on the ballot, I don't know how we, that's my concern is, how do we conclude? I think the, earlier in the process, the better we get.
Some feedback.
Some feedback from the community, probably the more logical our way forward is going to be.
Mr. Grassy or Ms. Sarden?
It was my understanding that they would lead us through the process of trying to figure out what the consensus is for the five board members and the administrative team. You know, whether that involves input from the community upfront, whether it's in the middle, at the end, at the tail end, I believe that they will work with us to put it wherever we want it, to put it. I don't think they have an issue with that. But I think their main focus right now is trying to get to the table something that five people can agree on here and our administrative team, so that we, we provide us a unified, you know, voice to the community, that this is what the district and the board in conjunction with the community. Like, I think they are going to bring that to the table, but I think they're going to try and get all of us on the same page first. So I think that's paramount, so.
That's how I understood it as well. But that was kind of the, one of the biggest goals of hiring someone to do this.
I understand, Mr. Fischel, your concerns. I do think, kind of how I would regard NV5 as being a facilitator, and I just think in our current circumstances, we need a facilitator to get everything out there, and then to hopefully start to get to a common vision.
This contract is just for that portion of it, so whatever we decide to move forward with, it could be this order of rep, it could be a different order of rep, it could be not that long. You know, that part can be determined later, just as far as just that first phase of this process of getting to us, us to a direction or four directions to consider to figure out.
I still have, but I mean, I'm going to agree to move forward with this, but I still have the concern that they are going, we are going to be spending money for them to gather information we already have. And just wanted to go on the record and state that.
I know, Mr. McEntire, you have taken some time to do the statement of work for us, and based on kind of what we're hearing at the table, the fact that we can adjust the scope of this, I mean, do you feel that's clear when we read this, so that we can work with them to bring the community in when we feel is fit?
I do.
Any other questions? I just, again, I just want to make sure we were all really aware of what was in here, and before we voted on it and moved it forward.
All right. So I think, with that, can you call the roll, Mr. Blackwell? So there are other items on the agenda for buildings and grounds as well? Any other discussion on those items? We did, as Mr. Blackwell mentioned, there was the adjustment for the work on the boiler at Lamuth to replace some of the domestic water lines, that's included here as well.
Going out to bid for the pool lines.
So, all right. If there's any other discussion, can you call the roll, please?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Twiski.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then there's a second item currently on the agenda. That's about the Board of Education handbook. There was a modification to that from the last time we looked at it. And so I'm going to make a motion to move the updated handbook to the policy committee for review, and then subsequently, once it comes out of the policy committee, we'll come back on the agenda. So the motion is to postpone to a later date after the policy committee has a chance to review it. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Blackwell, can you call the roll?
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Twiski.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to Board of Education updates.
Last time we spoke, I was getting an appraisal of property, maintenance property located in Fairport. And at our committee, we decided that at least ability to get this whole process going before we do anything with any of our properties. I did get a hold of a representative of the public that did previous appraisal. And I realize it, but his record show was back in 2008. So we're going to hold off until we know what direction we're going.
So, I'm sorry, will you, excuse me?
I wasn't asking the others.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say that I did have the opportunity to attend the Riverside Menor game back earlier this month, and unfortunately, I didn't get there until, until at the end of the first quarter, at which point it was 6-0 in favor of Riverside. So I missed all the Riverside scoring. But I just, I wanted to, to bring this up in conjunction of how, how, how an aspect of Riverside, the football team, really came in and prepared, right? It was kind of a David versus Goliath situation. Menor is approximately twice as big as Riverside, and, and, and quite frankly, I'm sure all of you are aware, and I know we had games since then, and Riverside has done quite well. But Riverside outperformed Menor in every way, shape, and form, except for the final score. It was, it was a tribute to, to the preparation of the, by the coaches. It was a tribute to the players who obviously got themselves to the point where they could compete against competition that frankly, at least by the numbers, we should not really have been in the, in the ballgame then. And I guess I want to take inspiration from that as we look forward to, to doing things with Riverside, with the campus. Let's, let's, let's come together and do things that, that really help elevate the game at Riverside overall. I think that we can take some inspiration with that. Another, another area that I would, would also hark into, and again, it's, it's more sports-related, but, but it's something we all, I think, are proud of, is that, you know, a few, a few years ago, I assume all of you probably remember the, the conventional field that we had on the football stadium, right? And we came together, really under, under Dr. Kales's leadership, and using a combination of taxpayer money, but also a lot of donated money and other things, we created an outstanding field, one of the best fields in, in Lake County, more or less on a shoestring budget, right? We, we, we were tight on the penny, but we had outstanding results. If we go into this reimagining of Riverside with that same attitude, I think that we're going to come up with a result. It may not be all visible. There are some things that are, that are system-wide infrastructure that, that frankly, a few people aren't going to see, but there are things that we can do that I think that will elevate the school and dovetailing into the, you know, the, where we stand with the, the state report card. I think there are, there are things that we can do to help elevate our game, not only from a physical perspective, but from an academic perspective and from a UV perspective. So I did want to say that.
Let's talk about Chard too. Chard football game.
That was good stuff.
That was great stuff. We had some of our students on the Chard side with drugs and chalk and stuff like that, and I went over to make sure it was appropriate. And I told them, do me a favor though. I said, write down 31 and 1. And they did, and after that game, Chard was 31 and 1. That's quite a, quite a stretch of wins for them and everything else. They run a good program over there. But our kids came out and just, all of them.
I know there's a couple of football dads and I see some smiles, so. Football coaches have some smiles, so.
We're actually ranked number two in Division Two, Region Five, which is, which is probably the best that I ever remember.
Go Beavers.
Yeah. They feel that, we can feel this one tomorrow.
You know, I just, I guess, well, I came into the school last Friday, walked around with Dr. Kales at lunchtime. I told him it was kind of almost eerily quiet compared to what I was seeing last year, which is good eerily quiet, I would say. Everybody was kind of doing their thing, getting lunches, moving around, you know, where they were supposed to be. So it was really good to see. Talked to a lot of kids. I know Dr. Kales helped me embarrass my son during lunch, so it was kind of a whole fun, but, so it was good to see a lot of good things going on.
One other thing I want to mention too, kind of with that heavy heart, we have a title tutor, Carol Greer, over at Buckeye. I've known her and her family ever since her first oldest boy went to Lamuth back in 1999. It's a great family, and she died unexpectedly this past week. And we just want to send our condolences on behalf of the school to her husband, Richard, and two kids that have gone through here, Jordan and Lori.
Any other Board of Education updates? All right. So a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:43 PM for Personnel Matters, Appointment and Reappointment and Conversation. Can I get a second?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.